Good morning.
Good morning.
This is one of those author unknown quotations that you might have heard before. I keep it pasted on my refrigerator door and I thought it would be particularly apropos for today. "A smile costs nothing but gives much. It enriches those who receive without making poorer those who give. It takes but a moment, but the memory of it lasts sometimes forever. None is so rich or mighty that he cannot get along without it, and none is so poor that he cannot be made rich by it. Yet a smile cannot be bought, begged, borrowed, or stolen, for it is something that is of no value to anyone until it is given away. Some people are too tired to give you a smile. Give them one of yours, as none needs a smile so much as he who has no more to give." While we don't have a page here today, would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Now, as is customary at the beginning of every brand-new session, we will call the roll for attendance to assure the body that there is a quorum.
Here.
Ansel of Callas.
Here.
Bancroft of Westbury.
Here.
Bartholomew of Hartland.
Here.
Baser of Bristol.
Here.
Bachelor of Derby.
Here.
Beck of St. Johnsbury.
Here.
Belasky of Windsor.
Here.
Dior of Highgate.
Here.
Thesenett of Winouski.
Present.
Bach of Chester.
Here.
Batso of Powell.
Here.
Brennan of Colchester. Here. Briglin of Thetford.
Here.
Browning of Arlington.
Here.
Brumstead of Shelburne. Here. Buckholz of Hartford.
Here.
Burditt of West Rutland. Here. Burke of Brattleboro.
Here.
Canfield of Fairhaven.
Here.
Carr of Brandon.
Here.
Chestnut Tangierman of Middletown Springs.
Here.
Christensen of Weathersfield. Here. Christie of Hartford.
Here.
Chena of Burlington.
Here.
Colburn of Burlington.
Here.
Condon of Colchester.
Oh.
Conlon of Cornwall.
Here.
Connor of Fairfield. Conquest of Newbury.
Here.
Copeland Hanses of Bradford.
Here.
Corcoran of Bennington.
Here.
Coopley of Brooklyn City.
Present.
Dakin of Colchester.
Here.
Dean of Westminster.
Here. And I'd like to explain my vote.
DeMiro of Mount Holly.
Here.
Dickinson of St. Alden's Town.
Here.
Donahue of Northfield.
Here.
Donovan of Burlington.
Here.
Dunn of Essex.
Here.
Emmons of Springfield.
Here.
Fagan of Brooklyn City.
Here.
Feltes of Linden.
Here.
Field of Bennington. Here. Gorgayt of Springfield.
Here.
Brenier of Chelsea.
Here.
Gage of Brooklyn City.
Here.
Gamache of Swan.
Here.
Gannon of Wilmington. Here. Gardner of Richmond. Here. General Batista of Essex.
Here.
Gonzalez of Winouski. Here. Brad of Moretown.
Here.
Graham of Williamstown.
Here.
Hawes of Rochester.
Here.
Harrison of Chickenman.
Here.
Head of South Burlington.
Here.
Peter of Vernon.
Present.
Helm of Fairhaven.
Present.
Be here.
Higley of Lowell.
Here.
Hill of Woken.
Here.
Hooper of Montpelier.
Here.
Hooper of Randolph.
Present.
Houghton of Essex.
Here.
Howard of Brooklyn City. Here. Jessup of Middlesex.
Here.
Jickling of Randolph.
Here.
Joseph Johnson of South Hero.
Here.
Joseph of Northfield, of North Hero.
Here.
Justowitz of Hamburgh.
Here.
Keane of Manchester.
Here.
Canaan of St. Alden's City. Here. Campbell of Woodstock.
Here.
Kitzmiller of Montpelier.
Here.
Prowinski of Burlington.
Here.
Leclair of Berrytown.
Present.
Lalonne of South Burlington.
Here.
Lanfer of Virgin. Here. Lawrence of Linden.
Here.
Lefave of Newark.
Here.
Lewis of Berlin.
Here.
Lippert of Heinsberg.
Here.
Long of Newfane.
Here.
Luke of Hartford.
Present.
McKay of Williston.
Here.
Marcot of Coventry.
Here.
Martell of Waterford.
Here.
Maslin of Thetford.
Here.
Mattis of Milton.
Here.
McCormick of Burlington. Here. McCoy of Holme.
Here.
McCullough of Williston.
Aye.
McFawn of Berrytown.
Here.
Miller of Shappsburg.
Here.
Morris of Bennington. Here. Morcy of Bennington. Here. Rowicky of Putney.
Here.
Murphy of Fairfax.
Here.
Myers of Essex.
Here.
Nolan of Morristown.
Here.
Norris of Shoreham.
Present.
Nois of Woken.
Here.
Odie of Burlington.
Here.
O'Sullivan of Burlington.
Here.
Piala of Lunenary.
Here.
Tarrant of St. Alden's Town. Here. Partridge of Wyndham.
Here.
Pierce of Richmond. Here. Horrier of Berry City.
Present.
Potter of Clarinet.
Here.
Hugh of South Burlington.
Here.
Quimby of Concord.
Here.
Rachelson of Burlington. Here. Reed of Faceton. Here. Rosingquist of Georgia.
Here.
Savage of Swan.
Here.
Shai of Middlebury.
Here.
Sherman of Stowe.
Here.
Sharp of Bristol.
Present.
Shaw of Pittsburgh.
Here.
Sheldon of Middlebury.
Here.
Sebelia of Dover. Here. Smith of Derby.
Here.
Smith of New Haven.
Here.
Squirrel of Underhill.
Here.
Stevens of Waterbury.
Here.
Strong of Albany.
Here.
Stewart of Brattleboro. Here. Sullivan of Dorset.
Present.
Sullivan of Burlington.
Here.
Taylor of Colchester.
Here.
Tarzanzini of Rutherford.
Here.
Till of Jericho.
Present.
Tolino of Brattleboro.
Here.
Toll of Danville.
Here.
Townsend of South Burlington.
Here.
Treber of Rockingham.
Present.
Troyado of St. Anne.
Here.
Turner of Milton.
Here.
Van White of Ferrisburg.
Here.
The Enns of Newport City.
Present.
Walts of Berry City. Here. Webb of Shelburne.
Here.
Wade of Ennisburg.
Here.
Wilhoy of St. Johnsbury.
Here.
Wood of Waterbury.
Present.
Wright of Burlington.
Here.
Yakarmoni of Morristown.
Here.
Yantashka of Charlotte.
Here.
Young of Glover. Brennan of Colchester. Here. Brumstead of Shelburne.
Here.
Burditt of West Rutland. Christensen of Weathersfield. Here. Condon of Colchester. Here. Connor of Fairfield. Here. Field of Bennington. Here. Gannon of Wilmington. Here. Gartner of Richmond. Here. Gonzalez of Winouski. Here. Howard of Rutherford. Keenan of St. Alden's City. Lanfer of Virgin. Here. McCormick of Burlington. Morris of Bennington. Tarrant of St. Alden's Town. Here. Pierce of Richmond. Here. Rachelson of Burlington. Here. Reed of Faceton. Here. Sebelia of Dover. Here. Stewart of Brattleboro. Here. Walts of Berry City. Here. Young of Glover.
All right, assuring me that we do in fact have a quorum. We can proceed on to our first order of business, which is adoption of rules to govern the special session. The resolution was emailed to you most recently by the clerk this morning, and there are a few paper copies on the table here. Please listen to the reading of the resolution.
Resolved by the House of Representatives that the rules of the House of Representatives, in effect on May 12, 2018, be the rules of this special session of 2018, except for the following addition thereto. Rule 48, bills and resolutions to be placed on the calendar for notice and subsequent action shall comprise solely those bills and resolutions consisting of new matters introduced during the special session. Bills or resolutions may be introduced during this special session. Upon adjournment, CDVA of the special session, all such matters contained in these new bills and resolutions not passed by the General Assembly shall terminate automatically.
Speaking for the Committee on Rules, a member from Westminster.
Madam Speaker, the Rules Committee recognizes the body that we passed this resolution on a vote of seven, zero, zero. Thank you.
Question is, shall the House adopt H.R. 1? Are you ready for that question? If so, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and you have adopted H.R. 1. Now, a member from Milton, would you offer us a motion to have the clerk direct, to direct the clerk to inform the Senate that the House is assembled and is ready to proceed with the business of the special session?
Madam Speaker, I move that the clerk be directed to inform the Senate that the House is assembled and is ready to proceed with the business of the special session.
You've heard the motion, are you ready for the question? If so, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and you have moved the clerk be directed to inform the Senate that the House has assembled and is ready to proceed with the business of the special session. A member from Milton, would you offer us a motion that we appoint a committee of six to inform the governor that the House is assembled and is ready to proceed with the business of the special session?
Madam Speaker, I move that the Speaker appoint a committee of six to inform the governor that the House is assembled and is ready to proceed with the business of the special session.
You've heard the motion, are you ready for the question? If so, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and you have moved to appoint a committee of six to inform the governor the House is assembled and ready to proceed with the business of the special session. Pursuant to your actions, the chair appoints the following members. The member from Burlington, Representative Prowinski. The member from Milton, Representative Turner. The member from Westminster, Representative Dean. The member from Northfield, Representative Donahue. The member from Middletown Springs, Representative Chestnut Tangierman. And the member from Fairfax, Representative Murphy. Will the committee please assemble to perform their duties? Will the House please come to order? We now have a number of bills for introduction. H. 1, introduced by Representative Brad of Moretown of South Burlington, please listen to the first reading of the bill.
An act relating to sexual exploitation of a person in law enforcement, officer custody.
To judiciary. H. 2 is an act introduced by Representative Ansel of Callas, please listen to the first reading of the bill.
An act relating to making numerous revenue changes.
To Ways and Means. H. 3 is introduced by Representative Brad of Moretown, please listen to the first reading of the bill.
An act relating to restorative justice principles and school discipline prohibiting sexual exploitation of a person in the custody of a law enforcement officer and criminal threatening.
To judiciary. H. 4 is introduced by Representative Callas, Representative Ansel of Callas, Sharp of Bristol, and Beck of St. Johnsbury, please listen to the first reading of the bill.
An act relating to changes in Vermont's personal income tax and education financing system.
To Ways and Means. H. 5 is introduced by Representative Collitt of Burlington, Dean of Westminster, Sheldon of Middlebury, and Sullnun of Burlington, please listen to the reading of the resolution, oh, first reading of the bill.
An act relating to protecting working forests and habitat.
To natural resources, fish, wildlife. H. 6 is an act relating, oh, sorry, H. 6 is introduced by Representative Wilhoy of St. Johnsbury, please listen to the reading of the resolution. Sorry, please listen to the first reading of the bill.
An act relating to notice regarding child placement.
We haven't introduced bills in a while, I'm out of practice. H. 7 is introduced by Representative Stevenson of Waterbury and Gonzalez of Winouski, please listen to the reading, the first reading of the bill.
An act relating to creating the Department of Liquor and Lottery and the Board of Liquor and Lottery.
To general housing and military affairs. H. 8 is introduced by Representative Gannon of Wilmington, Leclair of Berrytown, and Gardner of Richmond, please listen to the first reading of the bill.
An act relating to boards and commissions.
To government operations. Before we proceed with other announcements, the chair has an announcement, just so people have an understanding of what to expect. Committees will, those committees that have just been given some work or have some work to do in preparation for potential action by the Senate, are, will have time today, very shortly, to get to work on those, on those bills. If there are committees that, committees are authorized to meet between now and the next time we meet, if that is the case, any member that would like to come in to listen to that committee's work can sign in with ledge counsel and will, will be taking doing so. We have, when we adjourn, I will ask for a motion to adjourn until Tuesday at 10:00 per discussions with, with your leadership. That will be a token session to advance the work that any committees do today, and we will be back here on, by Tuesday, we will make the decision whether we adjourn until 10:00 a.m. on Wednesday or 1:00 p.m. next Wednesday, depending on whether or not committees need additional time Wednesday morning for anything, or if we need additional time on the floor, depending on our workload. By that time, there may also be a need for, for caucuses. So, we will be back here as a full body next Wednesday. Please stay in touch with caucus leadership and your committee chairs about any work that is happening in the intervening days, and we will make sure that you have that information. Are there any announcements? A member from St. Johnsbury.
Good morning, Madam Speaker. Actually, I have a question for the Speaker. H. 6 I introduce, I did not hear you say where, what committee went to, so I would know who to go see, and so if you may say where that was sent to, I'd appreciate it.
To judiciary.
Thank you.
Are there any other announcements? A member from Rochester.
Madam Speaker, I move that for this special session, the gentlemen be allowed to take off their jackets.
You've heard the motion, perhaps one of the most popular motions that will be made this session. Are you ready for the question? If so, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? The ayes appear to have it?
Nay.
Will the House please come to order? Are there any further announcements? A member from Swan.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Republicans will caucus immediately after adjournment this morning in Room 11. Thank you.
A member from Coventry.
Morning, Madam Speaker. I just want to let everyone know that Boy's State will be here on June 21st, and anyone that would like to assist in helping during the day would be most welcome. We generally hold committee sessions where members have worked with, with the Boys in committee and helped them develop legislation to bring back on the floor and then assist them while they are debating on the floor, trying to give them as much of the real thing as possible. So, if anyone would like to assist, please let me know, and I can fill you in a little more on what the schedule is. Thank you.
A member from Middletown Springs.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House of Progressives will caucus immediately after adjournment in the East End Element.
Seeing no further announcements, because we are adjourned for a period of more than a couple of days, we do need a weekend adjournment resolution. Member, uh, sorry, JRH 1 is a joint resolution relating to weekend adjournment, please listen to the reading of the resolution.
Resolved by Senate and House of Representatives that when the two Houses adjourn for the week on Wednesday, May 23, 2018, Thursday, May 24, 2018, or Friday, May 25, 2018, it be to meet again no later than Tuesday, May 29, 2018.
You've heard the reading of the resolution, the question is, shall the House adopt the resolution on its part? Are you ready for that question? If so, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and you have adopted JRH 1. A member from Milton, will you offer us a motion to adjourn?
Madam Speaker.
My apologies, a member from Westminster.
Madam Speaker, House Natural Resources, Fish and Wildlife will meet as soon as the caucus is adjourned.
Okay, and I would encourage everybody, if you don't already know what your committee's plan is, to check in with your chair before you head off to caucuses. A member from Milton, will you offer us a motion to adjourn until Tuesday, May 29th, at 10:00 a.m.?
Madam Speaker, I move that this body adjourn until Tuesday, May 29, 2018, at 10:00 a.m.
You've heard the motion, are you ready for the question? If so, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and this body stands adjourned until
We now will listen to the reading of the proclamation issued by the Honorable Philip B. Scott, Governor of the State of Vermont, under the date of May 23, 2018. Call for a special session of the Vermont General Assembly. I, Philip B. Scott, Governor of the State of Vermont, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the Constitution, find it necessary to call together the Vermont General Assembly, and I do hereby summon the members of the Senate and House of Representatives to meet in their respective chambers in the State House, together with the offices, officers of the two Houses, on Wednesday, the 23rd of May, 2018, at 10:00 in 4th room, for the purpose of providing Vermonters property tax relief through level statewide property tax rates, stabilizing the state's system of education finance, and making appropriations for state government for fiscal year 2019. Witness my name, here to subscribe, and basically, the State of Vermont, here unto fix, Montpelier, this 18th day of May, AD 2018, Philip B. Scott, Governor. Now you've heard the Governor's proclamation, are there any announcements? Seeing none, I'd just like to remind folks that there will be no phones or electronic devices in the chamber as per our normal rules. We have a Senate. We have a few Senate resolutions to take up at this time. Senate Resolution 1, a resolution relating to adoption of rules to govern the special session of 2018, is offered by the Committee on Rules. Please listen to the reading of the resolution. Senate Resolution 1, resolved by the Senate that during the special session of 2018, commencing on May 23rd, by calling the Governor issued on May 18th, the Senate does hereby adopt as its rules for this special session the rules as previously adopted for the 2017 regular session, except for rules 39, 41, and 100, with the following additions thereto. Rule 13A, bills and joint resolutions to be placed on the calendar for notice and subsequent action shall comprise solely those bills and resolutions consisting of matters introduced during the special session. Upon adjournment, CDVA of the special session, all such matters contained in these new bills and resolutions not enacted into law shall terminate automatically, and we have no further force at effect. Rule 39A, no bill or resolution may be introduced during this special session unless it is a bill or resolution introduced by the Committee on Rules, or a committee bill or resolution introduced with the consent of the Committee on Rules. All House bills shall be referred to the Committee on Rules, which may report any bills referred to it or reference to another committee of jurisdiction pursuant to Senate Rule 24. Rule 100A, joint, joint rules adopted during the 2017 regular session, by the way, this shall be in full force and effect during this special session. Now you've heard, now you've heard the reading of the resolution, the question is, shall the Senate adopt the resolution? Are you ready for the question? If so, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Now you've heard, now you've heard the reading of the resolution, the question is, shall the Senate adopt the resolution? Are you ready for the question? If so, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, signify by saying nay. The ayes have it, and you have adopted the resolution. We now have SR3 to take up at this time, it was a resolution relating to informing the House of the organization of the Senate, it was introduced by the Committee on Rules, please listen to the reading of the resolution.
Senate Resolution 3, resolved by the Senate, that the Secretary be directed to inform the House of Representatives that a quorum of the Senate has assembled and is ready on its part to proceed with the business of the special session.
Now you've heard the reading of the resolution, the question is, shall the Senate adopt the resolution on its part? Are you ready for the question? If so, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, signify by saying nay. The ayes have it, and you have adopted the resolution. We now pursue it to the provisions of SR2, I hereby appoint as the committee to inform the Governor that the Senate is ready to proceed with the business of the session to follow in two senators, Senator Ingram and Senator Clarkson. The committee may proceed to perform your duties, and the Senate shall stand at ease until the fall of the gavel to await your report.
The full Senate till Wednesday, but there will have to be a token, which is why the adjournment is till Tuesday, not Wednesday.
Now you've heard the reading of the resolution, the question is, shall the Senate adopt the resolution on its part? Are you ready for the question? If so, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, signify by saying nay. The ayes have it, and you have adopted the resolution. We now have some bills for introduction. We have Senate Bill 1, an act relating to health, health insurance, chiropractic care, physical therapy, and the Department of Vermont Health Access, please listen to the first reading of the bill.
S1, an act on the copayment limits for chiropractic care and physical therapy.
I also feel that it was introduced by the Committee on Rules, by the way. Now the bill's been read for the first time, and pursuant to Rule 48 is placed on the calendar for notice on the next succeeding day. We now have Senate Bill 2 for introduction, it was introduced by the Committee on Rules, it is an act relating to commerce and trade and consumer protection, please listen to the first reading of the bill.
S2, an act relating to regulating finance leases for credit card terminals.
Now the bill's been read for the first time, and pursuant to Rule 48 is placed on the calendar for notice the next succeeding day. Now for introduction, S3, introduced by the Committee on Rules, an act relating to education protecting schools from sexual exploitation, please listen to the first reading of the bill.
S3, altering the sexual exploitation of students.
Now the bill's been read the first time, pursuant to Rule 48 is placed on the calendar for notice the next succeeding day. Senator from Chittenden.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, just a quick word, those three bills, I had emailed to the full chamber indicating that those were bills that had reached agreement and just waited and fell off the limits because of rule suspension issues on the night we adjourned, and so the three bills have been introduced in their form that they were in that night by the Rules Committee, and spoke with leadership on both, both sets of leadership in the Senate, and we thought it would be more expeditious to take those up today, and so I would move that we suspend the rules for the purpose, pending entry of the calendar, taking up S1, 2, and 3 for action today.
Senator from Chittenden has moved that the Senate suspend its rules in order to take up immediate consideration for pending entry on the notice calendar, bills S1, S2, and S3, are you ready for the question? If so, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, signify by saying nay. The ayes have it, and you've suspended your rules in order to take up S1, S2, and S3. We now have, for action, S1, it was introduced today, I don't even remember what today is, please listen to the second reading of the bill.
S1, an act relating to copayment limits for chiropractic care and physical therapy.
Now you've heard the second reading of the resolution, Senator Bill. Senator from Chittenden.
Thank you, Mr. President. S1 is virtually identical to S224, which went to the conference committee, and that was approved on the last day by the Senate chamber. The only change that's been made, just by a very brief background, this is to bring copayments for chiropractic care that are under law for the last 10 years of the work, to mandate it to be reasonable to make that happen finally, and the one change from what we voted on already in the conference committee report is on page 3, on line 12, the maximum copayment amount, this is a technical draft here, should be 50% of the total reimbursement amount, it used to say total charge amount. So with that change, I would hope the Senate would concur to this resolution.
Question is, shall the bill be read a third time? Are you ready for the question? If so, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, signify by saying nay. The ayes have it, you've ordered a third reading of S1. We now have, for action, S2, an act relating to regulating, or please listen to the second reading of the bill.
S2, an act relating to regulating finance leases for credit card terminals.
Now to report, Senator from Brooklyn, Senator Susu.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is S206, which was agreed upon in the conference committee, there have been no changes at all, and it protects consumers from onerous leases on credit card processing terms.
Question is, shall the bill be read a third time? I'll wait to ask the question until it's handed out to every senator. The question is, shall the bill be read a third time? Are you ready for the question? If so, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, signify by saying nay. The ayes have it, you've ordered a third reading of S2. We now have, for action, S3, please listen to the second reading of the bill.
S3, an act relating to sexual exploitation of students.
Now to report the bill, Senator from Edison, Senator Sears.
Mr. President, this is exactly the same version as was voted on some Saturday night ago, can't remember which one, and deals with the sexual exploitation of students, had a rocky history and a bill of this importance, it's just hard to, last, you know, it took this long to get through. We passed it last year as part of S87, which was, sexual exploitation of students, a little portion of 87 got passed by the House Judiciary Committee on another bill, the bill for the Education Committee in the House, where it sat on the wall by mistake. This year, we reintroduced it as H27, and everything was going well, we had a conference committee, everybody agreed on it, and then at the final moments on Saturday, there was not a rule suspension, so it didn't get taken up, but I assure you, this is basically what you voted on at least five times here this session, or by any of them, I should say. So, this actually is an important bill that will help protect our students from sexual exploitation. Thank you, Mr. President.
Question is, shall the bill be read a third time? Are you ready for the question? If so, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, signify by saying nay. The ayes have it, and you have ordered a third reading of S3. Senator from Chittenden.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of taking up S1, 2, and 3 to be placed in all remaining stages of passage.
Senator from Chittenden has moved that the Senate suspend its rules in order to place S1, S2, and S3 through all remaining stages of passage, are you ready for the question? If so, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, signify by saying nay. The ayes have it, and you have suspended the rules in order to place S1, S2, and S3 through all remaining stages of passage. Are there any amendments, I'm sorry, we now have consideration S1, are there any amendments before third reading? Seeing none, please listen to the third reading of the bill.
S1, an act relating to copayment limits for chiropractic care and physical therapy.
You've heard the third reading of the bill, the question now is, shall the bill pass? Are you ready for the question? If so, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, signify by saying nay. The ayes have it, and you have passed S1. Now, for consideration, S2, are there any amendments before third reading? Seeing none, please listen to the third reading of the bill.
S2, an act relating to regulating finance leases for credit card terminals.
Now you've heard the third reading of the bill, the question is, shall the bill pass? Are you ready for the question? If so, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, signify by saying nay. The ayes have it, and you have passed S2. We now have, for action, S3, are there any amendments before, or excuse me, before third reading? Seeing none, please listen to the third reading of the bill.
S3, altering the sexual exploitation of students.
Now you've heard the third reading of the bill, the question is, shall the bill pass? Are you ready for the question? If so, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, signify by saying nay. The ayes have it, and you have passed S3. Senator from Chittenden.
Thank you, I move the rules to be suspended for mess, for the purpose of messaging our actions taken on S1, 2, and 3 to the House forthwith.
Senator from Chittenden has moved that the Senate suspend its rules in order to message your actions just taken on bills S1, S2, and S3 to the House forthwith. Are you ready for the question? If so, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, signify by saying nay. The ayes have it, and you've suspended the rules in order to message your actions taken on S1, S2, and S3 to the House forthwith. Senator from Chittenden.
I think, I, at this time, would move pending announcements that the Senate stand in adjournment till Tuesday at 10:00 a.m.
The Senator from Chittenden has moved a pending announcement, the Senate stand in adjournment till 10:00 a.m. on Tuesday. Are there any announcements? Senator from Washington.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senate Finance will meet at 12:45, we have a presentation from the Joint Fiscal Office.
Senator from Caledonia.
Senate Corporations and Senate Education will meet jointly at 2, at 1:30 for a presentation from the Joint Fiscal Office, and then we will continue to meet after that presentation to hear from the Administration.
Senator from Chittenden.
The Senator from Caledonia beat me to the punch on the initial meeting, 1:30 for Senate Education in approach, we will not be meeting at the Senate Education Committee following that.
Are there any, Senator from Chittenden.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to the Senate for making speedy work of bills we'd already passed today, I think it does help focus us on the work ahead. The agreement with the Speaker was that the three bills that were what we would call Senate bills, which are the ones we just acted on, we would take up here, and that the three bills that were House originating would be taken up in the other chamber. You may notice that in the bills that were introduced in the other chamber today that say special session, which were in front of us, only one of the three that I had emailed people about, which is the liquor lottery, appears, so I'll follow up with the Speaker just on timing, but the Boards and Commissions Bill was the other one, and then one was related to auto transport companies, so there were those three bills that we anticipate receiving from the other chamber. The other is, Peter Sterling will contact people to find out when people would like to start on Wednesday, so we'll make sure people know when we're gonna do that. Two quick words, Senator Brock's father-in-law passed away, which is why he's not here today, he's out of state, so we're obviously all thinking of him, we've been staying in touch so who knows what's going on, and Senator Benning today is reuniting with his daughter, which is of course very good news, which is why he's not here today. Senator Hallmore, I don't have a good example, answer for that one.
Are there any further announcements? Senator from Quigley.
We will be meeting as Democratic Caucus at noon, I believe in room 10.
Are there any further announcements? Seeing none, Senator from Chittenden has moved that the Senate stand in adjournment until Tuesday, May 29 at 10:00 a.m. Are you ready for the question? If so, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, signify by saying nay. The ayes have it, and you'll stand adjourned until Tuesday, May 29 at 10:00 a.m.